Before I get into the numbers of crime and traffic, just a few announcements. We do have Ironman coming up on the 11th. So we kind of encourage everybody to get ready, plan for it. There are going to be road closures. Everything's going to be posted in my newsletter that I probably will send out tomorrow. So if you're getting it, please share it with other people. I'll be at Food Truck Friday on the 17th. I'll be doing Halloween safety with the kids that come out to that. And on Saturday, the 18th, we'll be partnering up with Department of Education, the Special Ed Program at Monocrisian Ohana. So if you guys have KIKI that are interested in getting a Hawaii Police Department KIKI ID, I will be there doing that. So bring them by. And that is from nine to one o'clock in the afternoon. We also have a sign waving event coming up at the end of the month with our Traffic Enforcement Division. And I'll put more information on that. And basically Captain wanted to express at the end of the month, Halloween safety. Lula East Subdivision will be participating again in like a block Halloween party. So just watch out for a KIKI when they're out there trick or treating. Okay, so crime stats for September of 2025 in South Cohala District. We did have two assaults, excuse me, four assaults, two burglaries, five criminal property damage investigations. We did have 11 thefts, one stolen vehicle, and three investigations where vehicles were broken into and something was stolen. We did have one major incident in September. And for traffic, we did, our patrol officers did make two DUI arrests. We didn't have any fatalities in September. But however, there were 32 reckless driver calls within the district. That's almost one a day. We did have seven major traffic collisions in our district. And today's only, it's the beginning of the month. So we're not completely compiled all our data for citations. But as of today, in September, the officers here in your district issued about 578 citations, citations with speeding and regulatory citations being the highest among those two. But that's all I got. Thank you again for inviting me over. Captain really wanted to be here but couldn't make it.
Mahalo Officer Kvanteng. All right, this month's nonprofit spotlight is North Hawaii Hospice. We are joined this evening by Fay Mitchell, the Executive Director of North Hawaii Hospice, who will share more about the organization and the incredible work it does in the community. As always, we will pass the basket during the presentation for those inspired to make a donation. Fay, if you could join us. Like I mentioned, this photo is courtesy of Fay.
Oh wow. I have to say, this is really surreal. The last time I was standing here was I was speaking to my classmates. And as a senior at Parker, I had had a near-death experience that had profoundly changed me. And I was sharing that with the students. So here I am now with the privilege of speaking about hospice. It's kind of blowing my mind, honestly. So you know, my mom was a CNA for hospice. hospice. Just after I graduated high school, she started there. And she served North Hawaii Hospice for 25 years. She retired just around the time that I came in. Hopefully, not because of me, but anyway. And so, you know, this is kind of in our family. It's in our blood. You all probably know a lot about hospice. You know, we're a team of people. The team that, you know, I get to support them, but the team that actually goes out there, the nurses, the social workers, the nurse aides, counselors, they embody our mission, which is to assure that people get to be living where they want to be, how they want to be living, in the way they want to, with the dignity and support and comfort with their family and friends around. And just as important, we're there to support the family that's around them. And oftentimes, the best thing we can do for the patient is to support the family. Something that people don't really know that commonly about hospice is how much we support these families after someone has gone through this transition. Our bereavement services is something that I really want to just mark this evening. I know it personally. In February of 2024, I lost my son. And when I started coming back to work, the grief group that we have every week was down the hall, so I had no excuse. I had to go. And I mean, I can't say enough. It has literally held me through this entire time. There's something about people coming together. We know that grief never ends, but sharing it means that it can be carried together rather than alone. And so, it's something, you know, that people, I feel, need because we have hundreds of people coming out to our Floating Lantern Ceremony. It's the same magic that's created when people gather together to honor their loved ones, to remember them. And these are our people. You know, we see the same thing, we feel the same thing. So we are really honored to have that event. It is definitely our most meaningful event of the year. I want to call out some things that are kind of misconceptions. So people think that hospice is just for the end of life. And in fact, you probably think so because most of the people you know, maybe they, hospice was only there for like the last week. This commonly happens. Unfortunately, it's on average like only 18 days that someone's in hospice, but the statistics are that they were eligible for many more months before that. So why does this happen? Partly, it happens because we don't like talking about the end of life. That's kind of part of culture. And also, we wait for a referral. So if you remember anything tonight, please share with people that you don't have to wait. You can come to us directly. We really want the community to know this. You don't need to wait for a referral because, you know, it's going to only come at the very end. Because it's not something that, that's not a conversation I have, I say that doctors really want to have. And I think that people miss out, I know that people miss out on months and months of benefits. In fact, one of the most common comments we get is we should have called hospice sooner. So we really want to encourage the community to come to us directly to do so. I think that also a misconception is that you're giving up. And I think that's also why people don't call us until the very end. We have so many services for patients and their families that don't have anything to do with stopping treatment. So I encourage you to tell the community and to tell your friends and family to come to us directly. The other thing that we are excited to do that I think will change this perception is, within this next year, we are planning to open up palliative care. And that will widen the circle of people that we can share our benefits with. We are already providing care in the home, home visits. We already have a 24-hour nurse line. We already have all these services that will then complement primary care. This is a wonderful program that we're so excited to start. And so, any donations that we get from this point on are going to be contributing to building that program. And I know that in that case, people will be more attracted to, a palliative care program is a little easier to think about than hospice. But once they come to know us in that way, I think it'll be a lot easier to make the transition. So thank you so much for having us. It's really a privilege to be here.
Mahalo, oh, mahalo faith and mahalo for the amazing work that your team does in the community. So we are going to move on to the community announcements. I will go through these rather quickly because as usual, it is a very, very busy month in Waimea. So up first, we have the Narcan Giveaway this Saturday at KTA Waimea from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then Saturday, October 18th, at the Waikoloa Village KTA. If you miss these distributions, you can pick up Narcan every day during regular business hours at Tutu's House. The Waimea Arts Council is, has its first Saturday community art classes this Saturday from 10:00 AM to noon. Registration is required, and these are the ones over at the library. First Saturday arts in Waimea events will be occurring at Kamauila Hardwoods Isaac Art Center, the Firehouse Gallery, and Kahului Theater. This Saturday is also the second season of Eating Our Roots with Ipi Iona. It premieres at 8:00 PM on K5. Kahului Theater has two incredible presentations this month and a new exhibit, Textiles of Moku O Keave. Acting Director of Public Works, Saniel Azavedo, is the featured guest at this month's Wildfire Safety Meeting on Wednesday, October 8th, at 5:30 PM in the Waikoloa Village Community Room. I do not expect you to be able to see this, all of this map, but Ironman is October 11th. The full road closures can be found on our Facebook page. Also on October 11th is the Waimea Fall Festival from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the District Park. The same day is the historic Drywall Stone Setting with the Waimea Reservation Society and the Royal Order of Kamehameha from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Teen Tech Tutoring is back Sunday, October 12th, at St. James Circle from 10:30 AM to noon. You'll notice that it's monthly throughout the rest of the year. Waimea Family Food Truck Friday will be held on Friday, October 17th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM at the Keck Observatory Headquarters. And as Officer Kvanting mentioned, he will be there talking about Halloween safety. The West Hawaii Mediation Center's Pickleball for Peace fundraiser is November 1st. You can purchase tickets online at their website, www.whmediation.org. The Waimea Resilience Hub is introducing their Emergency Communications Awareness Network, WCAN. Follow them on Facebook at @WaimeaResilienceHub or scan the QR code for more information. Diane Chadwick is also in the audience, so you can talk to Diane or Patty if you have any questions. We want you to please save the date for our annual first mahalo to first responders event on Friday, November 21st, from 5:00 to 7:30 PM at Kahului Town Hall. If you have any questions, please contact Nancy. We also would like you to save the date and join us for the annual Waimea Twilight Christmas Parade, Saturday, December 6th at 6:00 PM. Please check our website for more information. And with that, I would like to invite Nancy up to the stage to introduce tonight's first speaker.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Oops. Aloha, everyone. Thank you for coming. All right. At this time, I'd like to shift gears and focus on Parker Ranch. Parker Ranch has many representatives here tonight, which we're really happy to see. Thank you for coming. Parker Ranch represents generations of paniolo legacy and heritage, deeply rooted in the beauty of our beloved Waimea. As such, a vital part of our community, we're grateful for Parker Ranch's enduring commitment to share in the kuliana of caring for Waimea and its people. Tonight, we are honored to welcome their new CEO, Micah Kane, to Waimea. Even though Micah has been working on and off for a few months, he first started his, or started the job full-time September 1st. He and his wife, Joelle, are settling into Waimea, and we look forward to them becoming a bigger part of our community. I guess they're camping out right now, they said. Micah previously was the president and CEO of Hawaii Community Foundation, chairperson at Department of Hawaiian Homelands, and was a trustee at his alma mater, Kamehameha Schools. We want to show Micah our support and wish him great success. Please help me give a warm Waimea welcome to Micah Kane.
Mahalo, Nancy. And aloha mai kako, everyone. Thank you very much, Nancy. Before I begin, I do want to thank members of the Waimea Community Association for their civic commitment to this community. In having worked in communities throughout the state of Hawaii, you know, a lot of times leaders like this are taken for granted. And so I really want to thank Nancy and Patty and others who are very active in this association. I'm sure they're giving up a lot of their family time. So thank you for your leadership. I also want to recognize a couple of very important people to our organization who are here tonight. First, one of our PRI directors, Robbie Hein. Robbie, if you can raise your hand, want to thank him for his leadership here. We also have the Chair of our Beneficiary Board, and she's been a wonderful part of our organization, has been extremely helpful to me over the past five months in understanding the history and what has gone on. Sandra Guli, if you can wave your hand, Sandra, thank you for your support. As Nancy mentioned, a few members of our leadership team are with us this evening. Had a chance to sit down with Nancy and Patty and get an understanding of, you know, the cadence of work that's happening within WCA. And we committed to have a presence here at every meeting. So I mean, this isn't going to be the first bite at the apple at us. So, you know, rest assured that we'll have a presence here. And I'd like to recognize a couple of members of our team that you'll, you'll see from time to time. Commitment on that either myself or Zach Judd, who is our VP of Long-Term Planning and our Regional Plan, a wonderful man that I'm looking forward to partnering here in our partnership with WCA. So Zach, if you can just raise your hand, back in the back up there. I'd like to thank Zach for being here. Also present is our Chief of Staff, Anu Alapai, and her husband, Kanoa. Anu, if you can raise your hand up there in the back hiding out. I think I have two more people. My assistant, who's been an amazing support for Joelle and I in this transition, Mel Sanchez. Mel, thank you for your support. And then finally, you know, someone who has relocated, like me, over from Kauai. She was, her husband is a, is a, is a paniolo and has recently relocated to Waiki Ranch, Sarah Blain. Sarah, who's helping us in our Land Development Division. Sarah's been a great addition. She's the former Chief of Staff to Miraka'Kami, so she brings a wealth of, of background. I also want to thank many people who are in this crowd who have been very supportive throughout my career and my previous work. Diane Chadwick, Rich Matsuda, Mr. Greenwell, Auntie Kanani Kopunei, I've seen her back in my days at DHHL. So it's really good to just reconnect with a lot of these people, making my wife and I feel at home, as well as Doug, having worked with Doug over the years. So thank you, Doug, and look forward to working together. I've put together a little bit of a PowerPoint. I'll try to stick to my time, but first, I just want to thank you guys for welcoming my wife and I here. If you can go to the next slide. Just to remind ourselves, I mean, we know that we're grounded by the beneficiaries we serve. We have four beneficiaries. The Queen's Health System, North Community Hospital, HPA, Parker School, and the Hawaii Community Foundation. And as you heard, you know, Diane and I worked together at HCF, and as you know, are beneficiaries. So we're very familiar for Parker Ranch from that lens. Being behind the curtain now, a little different. And, and we're learning, I'm learning a lot about our organization from that vantage point. Next slide. I wanted, I wanted to share a little bit about my personal background. You know, my, my wife and I have been married for over 30 years. She comes from this island. She, her, her father is from Kau. Her mother is from Holoa. And when we got married, you know, we made a commitment to, to retire here and to have a presence here. I didn't think it would end up this way. This wasn't the, the roadmap that I thought would get us back here, but I'm very grateful for the support I have from her to do this. She's a trust attorney back home. She has a boutique law firm, and she has a little office here in Waimea. So this, this, this works for us. And hopefully, over the next year, you'll start seeing a lot more of her as we settle here in Waimea. We have three daughters. They're all old already, 25, 27, and 28. We're blessed with three granddaughters. I think the female thing is something in the water in Kani'o'i. At least that's what we're looking into. But I think, you know, I, you know, I'm kind of on the sunsetting of my career. And I didn't realize, you know, till recently, how much the first 10 years of my life kind of guided my career path. You know, my, I spent a lot of time in a community called Nanakuli. And I'm originally from, from Kailua. And so this dichotomy between these two communities really guided, guided my career path. My, I was raised by my grandmother, my Hawaiian grandmother. My mother passed when I was very young. She came and lived with us in Kailua. And for the first like 10 years of my life, you know, I spent, my mother, my grandmother would pick me up in Kailua. We would commute to Nanakuli. It was about an hour and a half drive. You know, there was no kapolei. There was no eva by gentry. There was no koalina. It was a two, one, one-way road, you know, two-lane road, you know, going from central Honolulu all the way out to Nanakuli. You know, my father is basically pure Hawaiian. My mother's pure Caucasian. I look Caucasian. So, you know, I'd spend a part of my life, you know, my childhood in Kailua, where I was very welcomed. When I got to Nanakuli, you know, I was, I was an outsider, you know, and, and it tested you. And so that, that perspective of not being welcomed in your community, you know, always stuck with me. And, and it really kind of, I think, grounded me in the things that, that I tried to pursue. And trying to make people feel welcomed regardless of where they came from. And again, was probably the number one factor that guided, guided my decision in my career. My grandmother was, was a major part of my childhood. And those commutes were very informative to me in my life. For those of you folks whom might be familiar with the west side of, of Oahu, it's, it has its challenges. And that's been the case for the last 50 years. You know, for those who are familiar with that pathway, when you get close to Nanakuli, you hit a place called Kahii Power Plant. It's the big Hawaiian Electric Power Plant that's just on the Maoka side of the highway. And there's a hill that kind of goes up. And just over that hill, you get into the first Hawaiian homestead community called Kealanas. And it's named after the famous Buffalo Kealana family. And this beautifully paved road, once you get over that hill, turns into a very poorly maintained road. And my grandmother would always say, you know, you know, these politicians forget that people are trying to survive out here. And that always stuck in my mind, you know, the, the equity of, of, of communities. We would go to the library in Kailua, and I would ask my grandmother, you know, can we go to the library? And she said, well, Nanakuli doesn't have a library. And that always stuck in my mind. That library didn't come until we got to DHHL. And in 2012, Nanakuli finally got a library. And it was those things that kind of framed my thinking in the work that I've done throughout my career. I was very fortunate. I got into Kamehameha Schools under the Indigenous and Orphaned Program. They helped me throughout, you know, my educational career. Was able to get an undergraduate degree from Menlo College in Business. Was able to get an undergraduate degree from Menlo College in Business, went on to get an MBA from the University of Hawaii. And then I started my career. And I basically caged my career in three kind of buckets. The first bucket was really my time with Linda Lingo, who is, was an amazing leader and mentor and friend for me. Exposed me to things that I never thought I had the capability to do. And that was like the first eight years of my life, serving as a cabinet member for her administration, leading the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Got blessed to see communities like this. And a lot of the things that I've learned, you know, from those times is going to guide me in how I act and try to perform here in Waimea. The next 12 years was working as a trustee for Kamehameha Schools and getting an opportunity to really dive into education, into economic development. Kamehameha is a massive organization that operates statewide, and that was tremendous exposure for me. And then this final stint, working again at the Hawaii Community Foundation. 12 years, first two years as the CEO and president, and then the final 10 years as the CEO and president there. And again, just a wonderful experience for me. But each of those jobs served beneficiaries. They served people. And so I hope I come to this community with a servant leadership cut. So thank you for letting me express some of my journey. Next slide. Little bit of the timeline. Nancy talked a little bit about, you know, what our team has gone through. And I really want to thank Robbie and the group of directors and trustees. From June 24th to February 2025, from June 2024 to February 2025, basically, our board was serving as a proxy CEO. Each of our six directors were taking a division in our organization and allowed for the transition and recruitment of the next CEO. You know, that was at the departure of my predecessor. I was informed that I was able to get the job in February of 2025. It was a bit premature for my board in my departure. But they both supported the decision. And so the two boards got together, and they agreed to kind of a part-time transition. So for the next six months, I served as CEO for both organizations. And that was a very interesting experience for me. You know, being in an organization where you had 10 years to refine things and work on things, and then coming into an organization where you're kind of starting all over again and trying to, you know, thinking about where you want to move in organization. But I really want to thank our directors because they did a lot of heavy lifting during that nine-month period to start establishing a foundation that I had the benefit to jump on. And they did a lot of great work during that time. And then again, in September, coming now on full-time. Next slide, please. So just breaking that down a little bit more again. Here's, I think, being familiar with who these leaders are, the thing that really attracted me to the job was knowing that I could work with a very strong, committed, competent board that understood its role. That was extremely important to me. It's something that I value a lot. The board-management-staff relationship, to me, is one of the most critical relationships that's going to guide our success going forward. We got to be locked in, we got to be aligned. And I really feel like I have a board to do that. Mike Fujimoto, who is the chairman of HPM, Tim Johns, and Toby Tanaguchi are our foundation trustees. They also serve as directors, and they join Keifukanaga from Hawaiian Electric, Ka'iu Kimura, and Robbie, who's with us tonight. So I feel like I have a rock-solid board that really complements a lot of the things that our management team needs. Next slide. In phase two, again, I mean, it was really about trust-building. Just trying to understand, you know, what our employees have gone through. You know, and I've never experienced a employee base where you walk into the organization and their commitment to the company and the heritage and history of the company was so strong. As a leader, you only wish that you can walk into an organization that people are that committed. I'm walking into that right now. It's not something I have to build. But with it is a lot of history, some good and some not so good. And it really helped me to understand how important it was that before we come out to an audience like this and try to talk about what we're going to do, that we really get ourselves aligned within the walls of our organization. And we spent those six months during this phase really diving into building trust, building transparency, really peeling away that onion to understand, you know, what we want to do. You know, the trustees were part of that. Our four beneficiaries are part of that. And we're going to continue to build on this relationship. We're bringing back the retirees. They're a fundamental and key part of understanding our past and helping us determine our future. And then I really want to thank the Culture Advisory Group, who's led by Pua Kais and a bunch of her family members. They've been a wonderful group that have grounded me in the people and place and history of this beautiful pa'aina. Next slide. So where are we now? You know, what was very important to our employees is to show a grounded commitment to the core legacy of Parker Ranch, which is to be a premier world-class ranching operation that leverages that for the well-being of the people in place of Waimea to serve our beneficiaries. We think there's a lot of alignment and potential in how we guide our decision-making going forward. This preamble is grounded in the Hawaiian value of ho'omau, which means to persevere. And I think that's appropriate based on kind of the history of our organization. We've established a North Star through what we call our Strategic Reset Plan. And really, that Strategic Reset Plan is intended to be a short-term plan to help us create some breathing room by the end of the year. You know, let's reset ourselves. Let's start to look beyond, you know, a one-year. We will be, over the next few months, crafting a strategic plan. I will be before you at some time in the next six months, informing you of what that strategic plan looks like and the things we're going to try to accomplish. The Regional Plan, which you'll hear me talk a lot about, which is led by Zach Judd, is going to help us prioritize our work. And we'll get into a lot more of that at a later time. Next slide. Again, this was, I think, in my career, probably one of the most emotionally-charged experiences of my life, was being involved in a keep-ay-pee ceremony that the Culture Engagement Committee pulled together for myself and my team. My granddaughter was there, my wife was there. And a keep-ay-pee ceremony is really an acknowledgement of a transition of leadership and to lend their support to the work we're trying to do. And I'm very, very grateful for that. It was, as I said, an emotionally-charged experience. We did it this past Saturday, 6:00 AM in the morning, as the sun rose. We had a bunch of our staff there, some members from the community. And really felt like it was a way to start, you know, the tenure here. That's what I wanted to share tonight. You know, again, I just want to thank Nancy and her team for the invitation. I want to thank you folks for welcoming our team here, along with my wife and our Ohana. And I look forward to working with you folks. And I won't be a stranger. So mahalo, everyone.
Thank you, Micah. I think we have time for maybe one or two questions. Are there any?
It would be nice if Micah would introduce his wife to us, if this is his wife.
Yes, he did. Hey, Robbie, I'll hold it.
Micah, yeah, you, come on back up. But also, it's Q&amp;A. If you could...
I thought we both mentioned Joelle.
If you could also come up here, back up. You're not quite off the hook yet. Not, not quite. We had time for a question.
Robbie?
No, I apologize. I should introduce my wife, Joelle. Joelle Kanae, everybody. Thank you. Sorry about that, honey.
Micah, I don't have a question for you, but I just wanted to share something with the crowd. When Micah was, you know, first applied for the job, he asked, "Do I need to know about cows?" And I told him, "No, we will teach you which end the grass goes in and which end the grass comes out." And I think he's learned it anyways.
Well, let me add to that. You know, honestly, I've probably ridden a horse four times in my life. And the last thing I'm going to try to do is come here and be a cowboy. But I did want to add one thing. I come from a commercial fishing family. You know, it supplemented my dad's income, supplemented my income in high school, in college, graduate school, and in the first few years of my wife and I's marriage. And there's so many similarities to the business. You know, paniolos, they have their pasture. The mountain is their pasture. You know, our pasture is the ocean, is the ocean floor. They have wind, they have rain, we have current, we have waves. You know, we have a product that we're trying to cultivate, to grow, to harvest. We have to take care of that product when it comes to market. We have to take a product to market. You know, it's 5:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night, you know? And it's hard, hard, back-breaking work. And so, you know, I get it, you know? And when I talk to our paniolos, there's so many similarities to the lifestyle, the challenges, the fun, the beauty, all of those things. And so, you know, I try to bring that perspective to them. And I think we, in that way, kind of have a little bit of a eye-to-eye on things. And I appreciate that. I can take a couple of questions.
We're kind of low on time. We'll take one right here.
Theater was so important to Richard Smart. And I haven't seen that Kahilo Theater is a beneficiary. And I wonder if you would look at that as Kahilo is ongoing and always struggling to make ends meet. And there's a really good team there, working hard at it.
I mean, there are, I think, a lot of issues like that. This is one that I need to be a lot more informed about. And I'll be perfectly honest, I'm new to the community. I'm not familiar with a lot of the nuances and history that I'm learning. But I'd love to learn more about that. And I will learn more about that. I'd be happy to be more prepared at a later date to comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Micah.
Thank you, Nancy. Mahalo, everyone.
Mahalo again. So I would like to welcome to the stage our final speaker for this evening, Dr. Doug Simons. I will move out of the way so he can get set up. Director of the University of Hawaii Institute for Astronomy. Doug is no stranger to Waimea. Prior to serving as the director of the Institute for Astronomy, he spent nine years as the director of the Canada-France Hawaii Telescope. He is also a previous Waimea resident, having lived here just after graduating from the University of Hawaii with his PhD in astronomy in the 1990s.
Aloha, everybody. This is an honor as well for me to be able to provide you with a presentation tonight. I tend to wander around. So I will provide you with an overview of what I call the current status of Ma'akai astronomy. I cover a lot of ground during this presentation. I was asked back in March by the Ma'akai Management Board to give this talk. There are about six people in the IFA Hilo Library and some folks on Zoom. I had no idea how many. At the end of that, I made the mistake of saying, you know, "If you want me to give this talk in your community, I'll do that." This is now the eighth time. And just before I came over, I got an email from somebody saying, "Well, you know, maybe I'd like you to do it in our community." So here we are in October, me giving the same presentation. And for those of you who've seen it, maybe I could get you to come up and give the presentation. In any case, I'm going to cover a lot of ground. I realize I've got a timer here that's going to keep me on track as well. And start out with one of my favorite pictures of the Summit of Ma'akai. It's beautiful, Puu right here. You can't really see it with the lighting, but there are little footsteps around to Lake Huial. If you haven't been to Lake Huial, it's absolutely gorgeous, spectacular, very serene setting up there. And I don't know if you can kill the front lights. If you can't, don't worry about it. But if you could, I think it'll be easier for you to see the slides. So we're going to start off with just some numbers to give you a sense of what's currently up there with the observatories. Two of them, these telescopes are no longer there, Caltech Submillimeter and Hokukea. So we currently have 11 observatories on the Summit of Ma'akai. The current replacement costs about $1 billion, if you were to try and reconstruct all of that today. Some are between 500 and 600 jobs. And I estimate sort of $70, $80 million a year in operating costs associated with that. So that funding, for the most part, gets directly injected into the Hawaii Island economy through those 500 or 600 people that work at the observatories. It's one of the coolest international partnerships probably in the state. These are flags representing all the federal agencies that sponsor Ma'akai astronomy. You'll see some of these flags represent countries that don't necessarily get along together, like Taiwan and China. But here, in the scientific community, there's an extensive and long history of scientific collaboration. About $220 million of economic benefit statewide. About half of that is here on Hawaii Island on an annual basis. And you're going to hear a recurring theme in my presentation. The observatories are an important bridge to the community. And you and other members of the community are essential to whether or not there's going to be a future for Ma'akai astronomy for reasons I'll explain in just a minute. Going to take a little bit of a detour. I've given, I don't know how many, public presentations. And more and more, I'm trying to emphasize one of the most important figures in the history of contemporary Hawaii astronomy, and that is a Hawaiian, Alica Herring. You often hear the stories about the big tsunami off the coast of Chile, largest earthquake ever that created, I'm sorry, big earthquake off the coast of Chile, created a tsunami that wiped out Hilo, Hawaii Island Chamber of Commerce through a letter-writing campaign, basically identified a very famous astronomer, George Kuiper. And he was the one who convinced Governor Burns to actually put a road on Ma'akai. And there's this sort of asterisk. Oh, by the way, there's a person that actually did the work on the summit and discovered Ma'akai as a supreme astronomy site. For me, Alica Herring is the hero in this whole story that isn't really heard very much. If you know, by the way, Herring Kalua in Ke'olakah, he served with me on Ma'akai Management Board. Herring Kalua is Alica Herring's great uncle, and he's very proud of that. Alica was a Renaissance man in every sense of the word. He had a professional steel guitar band. And on top of that, he was, at his time, probably the most accomplished telescope-objective grinder-polisher optician in the world. And he created something called a Herring Super Mirror, and you can Google that if you want. At the time, that was the most accurately figured telescope mirror in history. I use those words very deliberately. It, in fact, exceeded the technology of the time to measure its deviation from a perfect surface. He did that after polishing something like 2,000 mirrors for a company called Cave Optical. And at some point, Alica decided he's going to make the best mirror ever. And he did that in ways that I personally appreciate. As a high school kid, I ground and polished two 8-inch mirrors. What he did with this mirror, I would have said, is impossible 1,000 times over. It's just stunning what he was able to do. In addition to that, Alica had phenomenal visual acuity. He was, in fact, hired by NASA with his Herring Super Mirror in the early '60s to sketch prospective landing sites for Apollo. In addition to that, we have, of course, the circumstances on Ma'akai that he discovered with his eyes and his incredible Super Mirror. After, you see him here polishing a mirror at Cave Optical. After he basically discovered Ma'akai as an incredible astronomy site, he used that Super, Herring Mirror in the first demonstration of laser telecommunications. You needed a mirror of that quality to broadcast a laser beam over 100 miles away. He did that in over a desert in Southern California in the... He did that in over a desert in Southern California in the early '60s. So that combination of circumstances is just an amazing part of the story. And I feel that, you know, given my history and my appreciation for what he did, it is so fitting that, in fact, he was a Hawaiian that had incredible skills, that actually used his naked eye with his homemade telescope to discover, for the first time, that Mauna Kea is the best site in the world for viewing the entire universe. I have a little video. I hopefully get the sound to work properly. It's the only in the video that I have of Alica. It's part of a documentary shot in the 1980s. You'll probably recognize the narrator, for those of you who are old timers like me in this late-night TV era that this guy was famous in.
The story of astronomy on Mauna Kea begins in 1964, when the mountain attracted the attention of the man often called the father of modern planetary astronomy, the late Gerard Kuiper of the University of Arizona. At first, Kuiper wanted to build a night observatory on Haleakala, a 10,000-foot volcano on the island of Maui. Daytime solar research already was being done here. But Kuiper found that the mountain often was cloudy by late afternoon. Yet, 75 miles to the southeast, he usually saw the sky starting to clear above Mauna Kea. Kuiper needed a way to get to the top of a higher mountain, so he got permission from Hawaii Governor John Burns to build a crude road to the summit. That done, an observation dome was set up for a small telescope. And for the next few months, an associate of Kuiper would use the telescope to determine the qualities of the site. That telescope now is in the front yard of a house in Anaheim, California, home of the man who built and used it. Alica Herring would work alone on the summit, huddled in the bitter night cold, to find out if Mauna Kea was as good as Kuiper thought.
I was sure from the very beginning that it was going to be a terrific site. I never had any doubts from the very beginning, because, as I say, there were just so many things in its favor. It had to be good.
So you recognize that as Johnny Carson. That was shot while I was a graduate student at the IFA in the '80s. We were very proud of that by PBS. And the sad part of this story, he eventually went blind. Yeah, and he was a gracious man to the very end. And like I said, for me, a personal hero, because his story is so special. Alica was the first to recognize Mauna Kea as an incredible site for astronomy. He probably didn't understand the physics behind that. Today, we're still trying to figure out the physics behind it. But, you know, the number one question probably I'm asked is why put telescopes on Mauna Kea? There are lots of high-altitude sites. What's special about Mauna Kea? Probably the most important aspect of Mauna Kea is its shape. It's, of course, a shield volcano with a very gentle topographic relief as the trade winds flow from the northeast over the top of Mauna Kea. Because it isn't a jagged mountain, the air flows smoothly, and it's coming in, mind you, from thousands of miles across a surface known as the Pacific Ocean that injects no turbulence in the atmosphere. So if you, for example, were to try and put telescopes on the Rocky Mountains, which are very jagged, and you know that generates a lot of turbulence, if you've ever landed at Denver Airport, every time you're bouncing like this, that's you flying through the turbulence. Looking through that turbulence is what creates a blurred image. The secret to Mauna Kea, the most important aspect, is the fact that it's a shield volcano. It's 14,000 feet, but it's got a very gentle change in topography over the course of that. So if you think about it, how many 14,000-foot shield volcanoes surrounded by thousands of miles of ocean are there in the world? Well, there are two. One's an active volcano, Mount Aloa, the other one is Mauna Kea. That is the most important aspect of Mauna Kea. That is why it is so special. It's the geophysics of the mountain as the air basically flows over the top from the Pacific Ocean. Of course, it's a high-altitude site. If you've ever been up there, your lips will get chapped in five or 10 minutes often, and it's got sort of 5% to 10% humidity. That means that radiation from the universe at different wavelengths is able to actually penetrate to the surface of Mauna Kea, otherwise getting absorbed by water vapor and other particulates in the atmosphere at lower elevations. And all the observatories on Mauna Kea have sort of specialized in their sensitivity to to match that, that unique aspect of the summit of Mauna Kea. In addition to that, it's not obvious, but you see these clouds right here that extend around. It's something called the diurnal inversion layer. A lot of times, you're driving over a saddle road, and you'll come through Hilo, and it's wet on that side. You're driving through the inversion layer. And above that, the clouds are capped. That's because we have high pressure in the Pacific Ocean. There's actually a downflow from that pressure, high pressure, and that caps the clouds at sort of generally sort of 6,000 to 8,000 feet, so below the summit of Mauna Kea. So why is that useful? Well, you can see in this time lapse of Mauna Kea as viewed from Mount Aloa, the clouds never actually get above the summit. So if you're on the summit of Mauna Kea and you're looking up, you don't see clouds. But if you're looking down at lights from cities around Hilo, they're being blocked by the clouds. So it's the optimal cloud condition. You want them where you you need them, and you don't want them or you don't have them where you you need to look up into the sky. This is Hilo right here, the green glow, if you will. We also have, by the way, some of the most progressive and supportive county lighting ordinance. I'm looking at you, Justin, in the entire country, for that matter, given the the importance of keeping dark skies above the summit of Mauna Kea. In fact, the summit of Mauna Kea has some of the very darkest skies in the entire world. So Mauna Kea astronomy over 50-plus years, in a sense, it really got going with the establishment of the so-called general lease back in 1968. This is a picture of Governor Burns in 1964. It's a little hard to see. He's the guy with the mildly lay right here. This is his four-wheel-drive vehicle of some sort with the tire strapped down to the top. This was not long after the road was first cut, so it was obviously, you know, very rough at that point. And what happened after that 1968 lease was signed with, between DLR and the University of Hawaii, was nothing less than remarkable and could not have possibly been predicted back there in the late '60s. Essentially, what happened was research transpired over the past 50 years that led to two Nobel Prizes in physics. One associated with the dark matter, discovery of dark energy, I should say, and the other associated with the discovery of a black hole in the center of our galaxy. Advanced technologies have been developed that are used worldwide now. For example, the Keck segment and mirror technology that is now used in James Webb Space Telescope. The infrared arrays developed at University of Hawaii. For a long time, Mauna Kea was associated with detecting the most distant objects, a plethora of exoplanets. We have some of the most innovative education and outreach programs in the world, and the Ahuhe Ano program that is now hosted by Emileau and Kahakaula at the University of Hawaii at Hilo, which associates through Hawaiian Protocol names of great discoveries, Hawaiian names of great discoveries made with telescopes based here in Hawaii. So to give you a sense of the magnitude and sort of profoundness of the research being done on Mauna Kea, I actually made this slide a while ago, and it's kind of fun to see as I think back where we were when I first made this slide in terms of discoveries. If you think of these sort of signposts and walking out towards those mountains off in the distance, it's actually a picture I took in Alaska like 20 years ago. We've already gone past the black holes. We've got the first images of black holes ever recorded, and Mauna Kea is an important part of that. Life ahead is not far out on this trail. I personally have a fairly high degree of confidence we will find life in our lifetimes. It's probably going to be in our solar system, but there's a tremendous amount of research trying to find it around exoplanets. The first stars, I think we've already detected the first signs of those stars. Those are very different from our sun. They were upwards of 1,000 times more massive, lifetimes of maybe 10,000 to 100,000 years as opposed to 10 billion years. And they blew up very quickly after they formed after the Big Bang. And then you have these incredible sort of insights out here, like the discovery of dark energy. Do we live in one universe or a multiverse? What kind of new physics is out there? So to give you a sense of some of the discovery space that Mauna Kea has helped us reveal, I have two examples for you, and I could, I have a whole set of presentations that I go on in addition to this. One is, and answer the question, is what is the ultimate state of the universe going to be? We now know that when the Big Bang occurred roughly 14 billion years ago, the physics of the universe was dialed in, it was locked in, and the universe was wired at that point to blow up. If you think about it, and that's going to occur in about a trillion years, that is the time at which the accelerated expansion of the universe reaches essentially the speed of light. Everything in the universe is stretching out as the universe expands to the point that everything is receding from every other point in space at the speed of light. Everything is shredded at that point. The sun's going to blow up long before then, so don't worry about it. We have many ways to to retire, so to speak. But in about a trillion years, we expect the expansion of the universe will exceed the speed of light, and everything will be destroyed. So what's kind of cool about that is our generation is the first generation ever to answer that question. It's because of the discovery of dark energy, of which research on Mauna Kea was absolutely crucial. That question, you think about, has been asked for millennia. Where did everything come from? Where is everything headed? We're still working on the where did everything come from question, and I have a presentation on that with Physics of Po. But we're pretty sure at this point, we know where everything's headed. It's all going to self-destruct. Another example for you, and it's a little rainy out tonight, but if it does clear up, this is a picture of the Pleiades star cluster. Look up at the Pleiades or Makalae, or for that matter, any star cluster or set of stars up in the sky. And I want you to imagine, if you will, what's really going on. You're seeing this star, but in fact, every star up there is surrounded by planets. So when I was in graduate school, we had nine planets known. Then we kicked Pluto out, had eight. And about 20 years or so ago, 20, 25 years, we detected our first so-called exoplanet. So now there are like 5,000 to 6,000 exoplanets that have been discovered. So when you look up in the night sky, bear in mind that you're looking at not just stars, you're looking at host stars for planets. About 20% of them are about the same size as Earth. So that's 100 billion stars in the Milky Way, 10 planets per star, that's about a trillion stars, I'm sorry, trillion planets in our Milky Way. And there are about 100 billion galaxies in the universe. Likelihood of life seems pretty high when you look at those sorts of numbers. So bear in mind, surrounding every star are planets, and many of them are similar in terms of mass to the Earth. So how we actually discovered those was a tribute to Keck. The first exoplanet detected with what we call the transit technique was done at Keck Observatory about 20 years ago. Essentially, you can't see the planet itself, but as a planet passes fortuitously along the line of sight to its host star, the brightness of the star drops just a little bit, fraction of a percent. This is kind of a wild experiment at the time, but you can see as you go through this little chart right here, and you're making brightness measurements of the stars, the exoplanet covers it, it blocks maybe a fraction of 1% of the light from the star, and that's the signature that allows you to detect the planet. That technique has been used to find more planets, exoplanets, than all other techniques combined. So mahalo to Keck for first demonstrating that technology. From Mauna Kea, we not only take pictures of planets, we take movies of entire planetary systems. This is a chronographic image. The star is being blocked here. You see these four little white dots. Those are all Jupiter-class planets orbiting around a nearby star. It's about 15 years or so over the duration of this movie clip. So the technology has evolved in incredible ways that we can actually direct image planets. We can actually figure out and sample or measure the chemical compositions of their atmospheres. We're now looking at what we call biomarkers in the atmospheres of planets to detect life in nearby stars hosting those planets, all done from Mauna Kea. Okay, with that as sort of background, with just two types of discoveries and research done on Mauna Kea, I want to take a little bit of a left-hand turn and share with you at least my own sort of personal philosophy as the guy who's running the UH Institute for Astronomy program. I tend to refer to it not as UH's program, but it's the Hawaii State Astronomy Program. That's very much how I, as a longtime resident of Hawaii, view it. Essentially, what has occurred, as in exchange for providing Mauna Kea and Haleakala over on Maui access to various governments around the world, recall the flags I showed you, the state of Hawaii's provided access observatories sponsored by those governments, enabling the state of Hawaii's astronomy program. Hawaii could never afford a $1 billion research complex on Mauna Kea. There's a comparable investment over on Haleakala. This is the same model that Chile use. Chilean universities get about 10% of the observing time of all the telescopes built in Chile, and in Spain, those universities get about 20% of the observing time for the telescopes on La Palma. So this is not a new model. We just happen to be a state instead of a federal government. So that state program is hosted by the University of Hawaii, and that is the institution tasked with creating a program that broadly benefits the state and is part of a strategy envisioned decades ago by Governor Burns, recall the picture I showed you, to leverage Hawaii's natural resources to increase our global presence and value while benefiting the people of Hawaii. Those are my words. For me, extending the benefit of astronomy beyond Hawaii Island is essential. Governor Burns was an incredible visionary. He recognized back in 1964 that there are natural resources unique to Hawaii. One was the ocean, it was obvious. He recognized the air of Mauna Kea is a natural resource. It's an unusual concept. When they discovered Mauna Kea, that was a unique natural resource. And part of his vision back then was to be able to tap into that natural resource, if you will, by supporting astronomy from Mauna Kea. Today, that vision is realized by 11 telescopes altogether on Mauna Kea. You can see all but one of them here. Like I said, Caltech Submillimeter and Hokokea have been de-commed. If you want to do, for example, Whitefield Astronomy, you would use anything from Subaru Observatory on the left to CFHT over on the right. Sorry, my laser pointer just died. If you want to do radio or microwave observations, you'd use VLBA down below or JCMT. If you want to do infrared observations, I'm very proud of this guy right here. So this is Gemini North. I worked at Gemini for 18 years. That is the most sensitive infrared telescope on the ground in the northern hemisphere right now. This is an important chart. I've shown it many times, and it's a chart that shows you along the bottom there various co-located observatories around the world. And the Y-axis is something called science impact. So that's a metric that you can score high in if you generate a lot of papers from research done by an observatory complex, or you score high by high citations. So it's, you score high by quantity or quality. You multiply them together, you get something called science impact with this metric. What I like to point out is the Mauna Kea observatories, year after year, are number one by that metric. That's a tribute to everybody in this room, our predecessors. It's not often in Hawaii we have that kind of distinction, where we are clearly number one in terms of our scientific research that we do and all that represents. By the way, on the far left, that exceeds Hubble Space Telescope's science impact as well. That's the level of contribution to the fundamental understanding of the universe that we make here through the Mauna Kea observatories. It is astounding how the textbooks of the 20th and 21st century astronomy classes are being written in large part by the research being done on Mauna Kea. Okay, so with that as a little background, I'm going to take you through a summary of some of the challenges associated with going forward with Mauna Kea astronomy. And this is kind of my job these days, so I kind of live, eat, and breathe this day in and day out. I believe it was 2019, I gave a presentation at the request Mauna Kea Management Board. It was only six slides, and I call it domino theory. And I deliberately structured it to start to get people's attention. Today is an extension of that six-slide domino theory presentation. I'll spare you all the details, but this is my very first so-called timeline for master lease renewal that University of Hawaii was seeking at the time. CSO was still about halfway through its decommissioning process. Again, they just decommed last year fully. I say here, the next five years are crucial, and then on the bottom, my sort of penultimate statement, what should we do in the sense of possibly losing all these observatories if there is no lease renewal by 2033, when everything is legally obligated to remove them from the summit? I say here, this is why, as an overarching priority, those who are in a position to ensure a future for Mauna Kea astronomy must do so by the first half of the next decade. It's 2025, that time has absolutely arrived. So some goals for renewing the master lease and the associated land use agreements for the observatories that I laid out a while ago and sort of capture the future for Hawaii astronomy that I would like to see at least. First of all, lay the foundation for a vibrant future for astronomy through most of this century. This is a long-term commitment that governments are making, and it was a 65-year lease that got us to essentially this point. And the next lease, in principle, will also be a fairly long one as well. So Hawaii astronomy stands to essentially define a good chunk of global astronomy over the course of this century. So pending agreements are going to enable a large fraction of the research around the world. It's going to be a give-and-take process, and failure to It's going to be a give-and-take process, and failure to renew that land authorization, for me, is basically unthinkable. The extent that we elevate outcomes for everyone, not just astronomy, but everyone through this process, realizing there's some give and take is absolutely part of the process itself. And a critical pending decision for the Mauna Kea Authority is identifying how many telescopes they will allow in the future, once the current general lease expires. That's an absolutely central near-term task for the new Mauna Kea Authority. What I call some assumptions and boundary conditions. I said before, all the observatories under the lease conditions are legally required to be decommissioned, and in fact, have site restoration done by the end of 2033. So you figure out how long it takes to remove telescopes from a high-altitude site, sort of rough estimate, five years. Back that up, so that's like 2028. So we're sort of three to four years out from the time at which the observatories on Mauna Kea now will have to go through a fairly difficult set of considerations. Do they go ahead and submit their notices of intent to decommission to fulfill that legal requirement? Or will there be a future cast through future land use agreements that allow them to go beyond 2033? 2033 may seem like a long ways out. It's really like three, four years out that this decision needs to be made. This is one of my most important messages for the community. I hear a lot the question, can't you just extend the lease, Doug? The short answer is no. I've been involved with a lot of legal expertise. I'm just an astronomer. I'm a land use lawyer in Hawaii. The only mechanism that I'm aware of to extend a lease is through a one-year revocable, and you can only do that so many times, and that it's, for me, kind of an embarrassing way to support a billion-dollar research complex through one-year revocable leases. We will not be able to sustain funding if there's no commitment to actually keep those telescopes afloat. Again, the future of Hawaii astronomy really does lie in the hands of our local community. For me, as a longtime member of the Hawaii Island community, I feel very strongly, this isn't a process of defining mitigation packages, making deals. It is a long-term commitment that the observatories and the community need to make together if this is going to be sustainable in the future. So there've been a lot of efforts over the past decade. I've been doing this probably too long to try and generate a new set of land use agreements. You can't really see it because it's kind of tiny font. On the far left-hand side, that is the EIS prep notice issued in 2014. That's when this process was first started. And that was paused and then restarted in 2018 by the 2015 protests on Mauna Kea, which we had over 30 people arrested. It was completely shocking. I remember it very well, touching down at Honolulu Airport, my wife texting me, oh my God, people have been arrested on Mauna Kea. And Governor Igai put out his 10-point plan, and amongst that was to put a pause on this entire process of general lease renewal. In 2018, it was restarted by the governor. I started as CFHT director, working with the other observatory directors to start to figure out what the terms might look like when we eventually get to negotiating with the university for new land use agreements. That went on, but was paused again after a restart in 2021 by the 2019 protests at the base of Mauna Kea Access Road. And then ultimately, COVID just shut everything down, right? So for me, I've been doing this for 10 years. Getting kind of long in the tooth at this point. And the clock is absolutely running down in this whole process as we work our way through these sort of fits and starts over the past 10 years to support a mechanism for lease renewal. We got it going again towards the end of COVID in early 2021, and it was a combination of the observatories, the university got together, and came up with essentially a set of terms. These are negotiating points that we felt were going to be necessary to renew the agreements. I'm not going to go through all the details of it. Just want to show you the sort of term sheets that we generated and merged. At a very high level, the things that need to be negotiated include the basic form of the legal agreement, what decommissioning commitments need to be in place, who's going to pay for what in terms of shared services, how much UH's observing time is going to get, et cetera. Each of those is a big deal to negotiate. We were basically on a path that this would be done in a couple of years, and basically we have to start all over again with this new process. So you have to factor that into what needs to be done in the limited amount of time available. Under the new Mauna Kea Authority, I suspect a lot of these same land authorization terms are going to apply. It's the same issues, more or less. We also need to bear in mind that, remember all those flags? They are the ones who pay the most of the bills, and they need to be part of the conversation too. So the National Science Foundation, NASA, National Research Council of Canada, et cetera. There's a whole loop internationally through these negotiations that needs to be completed, and that's going to take some time as well. I first generated a nearly identical version of this chart back when Act 255, which formed the Mauna Kea Authority, was actually House Bill 2024, because of my concerns and just doing the math about how much had to be done in the five-year transition period between University of Hawaii managing the Mauna Kea Science Reserve and the new Mauna Kea Authority. So on the left-hand side, this is 2021 all the way out through 2029. This red line, I just moved it again today. The only thing I changed in this chart is the red line that goes a little bit to the right over and over again. We have the start of the Mauna Kea Authority board right here in mid-2023. Here's the five-year transition plan. There's a bunch of negotiation steps that have to occur in the interim, basically. Where things get really complicated, though, is right here, July 1, 2028. That's the first point at which legally the Mauna Kea Authority is able to issue new leases. They can only do that if they have all their planning documents in place as well. So there's a number of milestones that have to be occurred before they can do that. In a kind of situation where the actually negotiations are done and we have July 1, 2028, new leases being issued, well, that's when we get into contested cases and lawsuits that eventually wind up in the state Supreme Court. And we're already pushed far enough downstream that those observatories are going to have to decide, do they pull the plug, given the 2033 time commitment that's in place? I don't have a solution for what I generally call the train wreck on the right. I was asked to give this presentation for the first time to just make people aware that we're three or four years out from that situation, and it's probably going to take a combination of legislative and executive action to figure out how to get out of this jam. But it's very real, and for those of us in not just the astronomy community, but I think more broadly, the community should be aware that this is hovering out there right now. So I'll finish off with what I think of as sort of elements of a vision for the future of Mauna Kea astronomy. This is kind of the world according to Doug, so it's always a little odd. And just four slides that capture aspects of what I would like to see in a future set of agreements, if astronomy goes forward on Mauna Kea at all. First of all, I feel quite strongly that Mauna Kea is arguably the best site on our planet for astronomy, and observatories that site should enable world-leading research programs. In other words, don't settle for second best. If you've got a telescope up there, it should be world-class. Otherwise, you're not really doing justice to the nature of the site. I think there's a lot of resonance with that idea. We don't want secondary telescopes. We want the best of the best to be used at the best site in the world. Next, I would dearly love to see what I call a sustainable number of observatories on Mauna Kea through the next lease period should be identified and supported. By sustainable, I mean in many aspects, like not just science, but education, cultural, environmental economics, et cetera. I remind everybody that there's always going to be a periodic check on the system. When those leases expire, that is the time at which that generation will decide if they want telescopes, or for that matter, any structures on Mauna Kea. We're right now in that process with the current land use agreements in place. And telescopes being decommissioned and replaced from time to time will be needed, but we have to get used to the idea, if that first slide is accepted, we're going to have the best telescopes in the world. We're going to need some new ones to go on existing sites from time to time. By the time the next land use agreements expire, some of those telescopes can be over 100 years old. They will no longer be competitive. And that's a fundamental aspect of this agreement that I think we need to be cognizant of and aware of, that sometimes you're going to have to take one down and replace it with another telescope that keeps the entire observing complex up there competitive. I'm quite passionate about this one as well. Hawaii should be a global example for indigenous culture and science and contemporary science advancing each other. If you've ever been subjected to the Physics of Po presentation by Larry Kimer and I, it's about two hours, so I'm not going to put you through that. I feel that this conflict on Hawaii Island is a reflection of conflict around the world in a sense, and it isn't enough just to fix it in Hawaii on Hawaii terms. I feel that we should find a solution that is an example for all the other similar situations around the world. In Australia, with the Aboriginal population, they are having their issues too. In South Africa, with the huge observatories being built there, they have similar conflicts in place. We're a bit further down the stream, but I think we should set a very high bar for how this is handled in our island community. It's not a mitigation package away from a solution. It's a much deeper lasting solution. It's a personal solution at the community level that's needed. And then finally, Mauna Kea astronomy should provide transformative education opportunities for our Keiki. Those opportunities should be found nowhere else in the world, and in fact, that is occurring right now in various ways that I'll show you in just a minute. Commit observing time for student access in exchange for those land use agreements. I feel passionately that our kids across the entire state should have access to those telescopes. No other students, no other kids in the world have that. Our kids should have that, and it should be built in as part of the agreements. Education for me is as important as any other aspect of Hawaii astronomy. Education is the leverage into the future that we need to invest in. We have programs like Journey and Mauna Kea Scholars that capture that program very well. So I never miss an opportunity to embarrass Mary Beth, and since she's the president of this association, I can really amplify it now. She leads the Mauna Kea Scholar Program, and I have one short video, it's about one minute long, that captures an award ceremony that we had. It was broadcast on Channel 8, KHNL, last May.
A graduate senior from Waipahu High School has been awarded a $10,000 scholarship from the Mauna Kea Scholars Program. Mila Rexford plans to study the University of Waimea at Hilo this fall. She's been collaborating with astronomers through the program since she was a sophomore and created 3D models for her project, "The Mystery of the Red Square Nebula."
It started from a simple proposal, just from being interested in the topic I chosen, which was the red square nebula, up until receiving telescope time, able to go to the Big Island, look at the Mauna Kea Observatory. Just seeing the environment that real astronomers work in is so inspiring and so fascinating.
In addition to the scholarship, 10 more Waipahu High School students were awarded telescope time to do their own projects.
So we have about 1,300 students so far. We're starting our 10th year in the Mauna Kea Scholar Program in high schools all over the state. I'm super proud of that. It is transformative to a lot of these kids. Talk to Mary Beth about it after the program, if you like. This is a typical year. It's a subset of the outreach the observatories do. I added up about $2 to $2.5 million a year that the observatories provide in terms of education and outreach on Hawaii Island. It's a small font to emphasize how many different programs we either participate in, sponsor, or directly organize and lead across Hawaii Island. We also have the new Space Science and Engineering Initiative at UH Hilo. I'm super proud that we have our first 20 future engineers in the UH Hilo pre-engineering program taking classes right now. This is a collaboration between the Institute for Astronomy, UH Hilo, and College of Engineering. And it's intended basically to provide a local UH Hilo-based engineering degree pathway. We've never really had that. The intent, obviously, is to grow local engineers for the observatories, but it's actually, astronomy is just a catalyst for engineers across the state. We're trying to make it easy for our local students to be able to stay at home on Hawaii Island to get their engineering degrees, and then stay in the state afterwards after that. So basically, it's a two-plus-two program. You take your first two years at UH Hilo for general engineering, then you get specialized coursework at UH Manoa, where you can become an electrical engineer, computer science, mechanical engineer, et cetera. So the evolving mission for the Institute for Astronomy has many aspects to it. It's keeping me more than busy. Like I said, we've got 10 new faculty and 8 new, 10 new faculty at IFA that we are adding over the past few years, and 8 new faculty with the Space Science and Engineering Initiative. Whole nother story with the Navy Fine Place of Learning Program at UH Manoa, which the Institute for Astronomy is deeply associated with. Trying to get a new building at UH Hilo campus for the new engineering program that is, you know, expanding, I hope at an exponential rate in the years ahead. So despite all the uncertainties that we've got going on, we really are trying to go full throttle with the state astronomy program. I live in Hilo, kind of breaking the trend, if you will. The first IFA director to not live on Oahu. I would not have taken the job if I had to leave. So it was a non-negotiable term, put it that way. So I give Hawaiian Airlines a lot of business, is the way I work around that problem. This, by the way, is Sianna Le Benz with Repo Nishi. She is native Hawaiian, wonderful, wonderful young woman. She too won the Hokulea Scholarship. She is in her third year at Yale University, majoring in astrophysics, and I believe she will be the third native Hawaiian astronomer with a PhD in a matter of few years. She's had two internships back at IFA since starting her degree program at Yale. So back to the beginnings, as I wrap up the presentation, the current state of Hawaii in astronomy, I've convinced you that over the 50 years or so, that there has been sort of contemporary astronomy on Mauna Kea in many respects. It's a world-leading program, and we should all be really very proud of that. The transition to the Mauna Kea Authority brings both challenges and opportunities. That's not a big surprise. I showed you some of the challenges. It's also a great opportunity for essentially changing the paradigm in which we all relate through the Mauna Kea Authority to Mauna Kea. And in addition to that, as I've said many times, the future of Mauna Kea astronomy really does lie in the hands of our community. I'll finish with this little video. This was created with this miracle technology called Super 8 Film. This is two astronomers from the catwalk of the 88-inch in the 1970s. That's the CFHT, the second floor being poured over on the sort of northmost Puu on the summit of Mauna Kea, the upper ridge line. And I like to use that as a backdrop for a few final thoughts. The Hawaiian Cultural Renaissance in the 70s began about the time this film was made, when Dance was revived, Olelo Hawaii, which nearly died, came back, Hokulea. All of that started about the time this film was made. Today, the future of Mauna Kea astronomy stands to be far richer than we ever imagined, and it's not just because we've got big telescopes up there. Astronomy can be much more than that if you put your mind to it, and as a community, we work to extend the benefits of it as broadly as we can. In the end, the cultural legacy and wisdom of Hawaiian kupuna, the collective will of our community, and the common thread our children's futures represent will be what perpetuates Hawaii astronomy this century. I've distilled a lot into that one sentence. Took me a long time to figure out what I wanted to say. Those are essential elements. Hawaiian kupuna, our kids, and our community, that is, those are the essential elements of a future for Hawaii astronomy on Mauna Kea. This is a challenge and a half in what I call aligning visions for Mauna Kea. We have so many different perspectives. They're all important. They're all valuable. Finding that alignment is crucial so that we can figure out collectively as a community where we're headed for the future of the summit of Mauna Kea over the course of the next several decades at least. So with that, I came in under time, probably about one minute. Thank you very much.
Hello, hello, is this working? Yeah? Got a couple of questions here. You compared the Mauna Kea telescopes to the Hubble. Can you please compare these with the abilities of James Webb?
Yeah, I get that one a lot, too. So James Webb Space Telescope, first of all, it's a $10 billion satellite a million miles away, so there's only one, super expensive. Webb is an infrared satellite, and what it does cannot be replicated on the surface of the Earth. The reality is, if you're going to understand in a comprehensive way the physics of an object in the sky, you need to look at it at many different wavelengths using a variety of different tools. So for example, there are only a handful of astronomy satellites in orbit right now. Hubble is probably the most famous of them. And the way the space astronomy community has designed those is very much synergistic with the ground-based community. We have, for example, ground-based facilities like Keck, which have such incredibly large mirrors that they gather light way more effectively than the small telescopes that are out in orbit. So they work together, basically, to give you a more comprehensive understanding than you could get with just than you could get with just space telescopes or ground-based telescopes. You will not replace the Mauna Kea observatories, or for that matter, ground-based astronomy, with one telescope. If for no other reason, the universe is so big. There's so many things to look at. You'll need more than one telescope. But it does that really well, the Webb does. But what it does well, it's a very small sort of niche within the entire spectrum of what you need to understand objects in the sky.
Thank you. Another question that came in earlier. Is there a future for the TMT, or has the opportunity and technology passed?
Yeah, I get that one a lot, too. Biggest challenge right now for TMT near-term is funding, at least in my opinion. And I think it's no secret that they, through the recent sort of presidential sort of recommended budget, it was announced that the US Extremely Large Telescope Program, which is two parts. There's the GMT in Chile and TMT in Hawaii. And it was decided by NSF that they would pursue the GMT telescope in Chile. It's a 20-meter. I'll spare you the details why I think that was a bad call. But the reality is, the next most essential thing that TMT needs to do is get back within the National Science Foundation's design queue so that they at least have a means by which to get federal funding going forward. There's the whole issue of land use agreement and community issues on top of that. I'm just telling you, today, in early October, the most urgent issue for TMT is getting back in the NSF so-called final design review process. That pathway is the only pathway, in my opinion, that's viable for long-term federal funding for the observatory. So they're still alive and trying all kinds of things to try and get the funding established. But that is the current state for TMT.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm going to ask one because I've seen the talk before. Say something more about the Physics of Po. It's a two-hour talk. Give us a short version.
All right. Let's see. So first off, if you want to see it, Larry and I did it over on Lanai, and then we closed the bar down. We're at the Four Seasons over there. And, I'm sorry, Larry Kamura. Everybody knows Larry. Is there another Larry? Many of you know John DeFries. And he's a friend of mine for a long time now. And he came up with the idea of creating something called the Slushal Nomenclature. And John, because of the lineage in his family and all the cosmologically motivated names in his family, he wanted, on that basis, to explore the possibility of great astronomical discoveries from Hawaii-based telescopes being given Hawaiian names. And he approached me about that in 2017. I loved the idea. The observatories signed up to it. And we had about a year of quiet meetings with members of the community, a little Hui, almost entirely native Hawaiian. And it was through that process that Larry and I started a side conversation about the Kumalipo. I was fascinated with the prelude to the Kumalipo, which is like the first 13, 14 lines, which are absolutely, you know, laced with profound cosmological concepts. Larry is one of the few people that has interpreted it, translated it, has not published it yet, in a unique way. And I'll never forget, because Larry, through these planning meetings for Ohueheinoa, we built a really close personal friendship. And he presented his interpretation of the Kumalipo prelude to me. And I just about fell on my chair. I told him, Larry, that's the Big Bang. And I've told other astronomers his interpretation, they say the same thing. It's quite just amazing. And that's what got Larry and I interested in the sort of joint discovery of the Kumalipo. I as an astronomer and Larry as an Olelo Hawaii expert. Larry doesn't know much about astronomy. I know next to nothing about Olelo Hawaii, but we had a common interest in the Kumalipo. And from there, we created a presentation called "The Physics of Po." And the first half is Larry explaining the Kumalipo, which is this incredible chant, over 2,000 lines long. It takes hours to recite, developed over centuries. The first part is dedicated to essentially the creation of everything from nothing. And for me, that sounds like vacuum energy and higher-energy physics, but in the Kumalipo, it's the creation of everything from po, which is essentially an extremely powerful infinite region of darkness. That's how it's described. And then the remainder of the Kumalipo is mostly about evolution and how this deity-free environment that led to the formation of essentially the raw material of the universe led to the Earth and eventually the very first forms of life that the Hawaiians identify, and that was coral polyps. And I think that's because that was the smallest form of life you could see with your naked eye. And then you walk your way through it, and you go from coral polyps eventually all the way to people. Incredibly sophisticated theory of evolution. I'm not an expert in this field in terms of other cultures, but I was always captivated. And I wondered what in the world, given their observations and their tools, led them to conclude this theory of evolution from an energy source that is composed or described as an infinite black space to people? It almost gives you chicken skin when you think through that amazing story. So I was drawn to the Kumalipo. Larry was drawn to obviously the Kumalipo. We were both drawn to each other's understanding of it. And we've given that presentation like 20 times now, several times of big auditoriums over in Manoa or Honolulu. And for me, it's one of the funnest things I've ever done, is working with Dr. Larry Kamura. I've called him a national treasure. I'm in awe of what he did, the bravery that he demonstrated with a small Hui to essentially save the Hawaiian language back in the '70s. And it's been a great honor for me to have this sort of, basically, we're two old guys, very different backgrounds, united in our fascination with an ancient chant that has knowledge that is profound and puzzling for both of us. So do a presentation on Lika herring in much more depth. Again, it's kind of cool. Larry was a DJ in the '70s. And his fascination with Lika is because of the songs that his steel guitar band made. My fascination is the mirrors that he ground with his hands. So it's going to be fun, me and Larry, I think, working together on another presentation. For me, it's an example of how if you share curiosity, it tends to blur the cultural, the distinctions that may otherwise be in place. We just want to know, that's all. We just want to know as two people. And if you have that common curiosity, it will empower you to go in directions you never thought before.
You went much longer than I thought, but thank you. Thank you for that. All right, we appreciate all of your support for being here. Thank you. Drive safely, everybody. This was our last regular meeting of the year. Next month, we invite you all to join us at the Mahalo to First Responders event at Kahului Town Hall on February, November 21st at 5:00 p.m. So mahalo, and everyone have a nice evening. Thank you.